Where we go. Before we get started, I just want to welcome David and Jane to their first official school board meeting. Jane's our new BA, in case anybody didn't know, she was just hired like a week ago. And David was hired at the beginning of July. So, thank you for coming and thanks for being here. Um, we have the manifest going around. Anybody hasn't signed it yet? And then we just need to approve the minutes for the June 13th, June 20th, July 25th and August 1st. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Corrections, anything?
Single.
I didn't have anything. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So moved. We'll open it up for citizens' comments. Anybody have any with this point that are in the room? No, everybody online? Huh? We, we open them again at the end, yeah? Maybe I don't mind Maria if it has any comments.
Donna, do you have any comments?
No, thank you, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. And Sean, do you have any comments?
Yeah, actually, I do. So after the last school board meeting, you guys had talked about some job descriptions that you looked at and you were going to approve tonight. I noticed they were on the agenda for tonight. So after that meeting, I did do a write to no request to see what those job descriptions were. Obviously, I was obviously on the board for quite a long time and on personnel committee for quite a long time. So I was curious to see what you folks were changing again. You know, coincidentally, I was also getting rid of the last of my board stuff, you know, finally freeing myself of all that paperwork, right? And I ironically found my very first year, all the meetings my very first year, and I don't know if you guys are aware that even back then, some of these job descriptions were again on the agenda and again changed and again modified and everything else and it seems like some of these job descriptions change as often as some people change their socks, right? So part of the aggravation that I had at the, at the end of my term was the fact that how is anybody supposed to do these jobs when the descriptions are changing constantly? And as I'm looking through them, you know, some of these things that you're adding on to some people, you're setting them, setting them up for failure, right? We had some positions that people had for those people who are gone now and they told us what the problems were, you know, how they were overburdened. And you're creating that same situation with some of these people, you're going to go right back to the same problems. I understand that a lot of this is a result of what happened at town meeting and budget cuts, and I get that. But I think that the board can do better. I think that the board has to set the vision and the goals and then it's, they have to let the administration execute those goals, right? They have to just do it. It's, it's very aggravating to see that, you know, the, the, the board and the district are yet again putting Band-Aids on broken legs and wondering why people are limping around. It, it, it's, it's very frustrating. I happen to know from firsthand experience that the board can do better, right? That board can do, looking back at the elementary school to see what that board can do when you work together. It's, I know you can overcome this, I know you can solve these problems, I know you can look at this and avoid the issue, right? So really, I'm really hoping you guys listen to this. And when you get to the job descriptions, I really hope that you table them. Bring them back to the personnel committee, think about what's going on, look at the challenges of what you have and really look at, this isn't going to solve your problem. So I guess that's it for now, I just really hope that you consider tabling them and giving it some more thought. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Would he have access to the current? As the current version of these?
He did a write to me.
Current version, yeah, okay. That's what my question was. We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Welcome. Is there anything else? Are we good?
We have more people. Alex, do you have any comments?
I don't at this time now.
Thank you. iPhone, do you have any comments? Okay, thank you.
It's already. Thank you, Maria. Uh, next we have a superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, it's, uh, great to be here to deliver my course of, I believe, twelve reports. Um, it obviously included in the packet, I believe it's shared with the public. So I'll highlight some of the, the points that are in here so that we can move to other reports as well. The entry plan that I am currently working under has led me to have now been able to interview each of you one-on-one for, in some cases, a significant period of time. I've enjoyed some of the eateries that we've met at, I've gotten to know Brad overall pretty well, it was all the meetings that came out there, so thanks for that. Uh, but I've also been able to, to meet with the members of the community, I've met with Chief Portage, I've met Steve Diorio yesterday, good morning. I met with Catherine Lynch, I met with Lynn Carey Superintendent Winchester, introduction to our neighbor, I met with Lisa Avery Walker, who's superintendent of our neighborhood. And so just being able to get into the community and learn about the culture of, of the Hinsdale community has been eye-opening, super helpful in my work. Uh, spent one-on-ones with each and of the eighteen members, uh, learning more about their individual roles and their impact on what it is that we're doing here at SAU ninety-two. Um, and finally, I was able to meet with some students, uh, because they've been away for the summer, but now they're, they're coming back and taking opportunities to sit and listen to what their needs are and what their wants and desires are for, for their future here. So, um, that's been incredibly helpful and informed some of the priorities that is being set and that we can advise the board on. So I anticipate that within the next three or four weeks, we'll be able to provide a written summary of, of what we have found or what I have found and some of the recommendations that we're going to have for for our work together for this year. Again, reminding board on an interim basis and understanding my role as a chief of superintendent, so I fully embrace that. Want to make sure that I'm coming, coming to you with information and suggestions through that lens, understanding what we transition at the whole time. The next year, a couple of highlights, I am going to be asking or have asked the board to engage in a board retreat with me for a couple of topics. One, uh, as we've done with the administrative team, we're working on building trust within the administrative team. We're ultimately able to do within explore the strict laws of our teachers and our students. I'd like to do that work with this board as well and really put on the table all of our expectations and establish some norms for how we're working together, how we're working in the community, how we're following following the decisions that we're, we're making, conversations that we're having. I think it's really helpful if we're as transparent as possible. And I think that starts by all of us getting to know each other a little bit more, understanding what our goals are and where I'm best able to help the board and come out of that retreat with some, some goals for how we're going to work together in the district. Tonight, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, to look at some dates since we have all five big members here.
Yeah.
That before we leave tonight, that we can set a date sometime.
We should probably do it now, so.
I'm happy to, yeah, I'm happy to do that now if there is an appetite for that, so.
Yep, yeah.
I would be looking to have about four hours of time. Knowing that school is starting in two, the kids are coming in two weeks, so there's no turning that back. So I don't know what the board thinks about perhaps after we get school open, so looking at having a board the week of the I don't know how you are for afternoons, or we're going to be looking at a weekend deck. I don't know what the preference of the board is, so if I could get some guidance on that.
Well, I work so afternoons, I can't do a weekday, it doesn't work.
I'm flexible. I can make myself.
I'm flexible for the daytime.
Okay. Uh, if we suggested a Saturday morning, would that be out of order for the board, if we're crunching on your weekend time?
We've used to do them on Sundays just because Sean worked on Saturdays, so we do Sundays, but if, you know, Saturdays work for everybody, that's.
I can do that.
Yeah, Saturday, okay, so a Saturday, what if we say Saturday the ninth?
I am going to be in New York that weekend.
Good for you.
Oh, I'm working.
So good for you. Um, so if we look at following again, Saturday the sixteenth.
No, I'm in Pennsylvania.
Okay. Uh, what if we looked at Sunday, you're gone if you were, so you're gone that weekend, Sunday, Saturday, the, no, can't do that, I'm gone. It's getting tough, this is why I wanted to.
If we did it, if we did it after, if we did it like five or six o'clock during the week, would that be easier for people?
It would be easier for me, yeah, my weekend.
Can you do five or six or Halloween, is your?
I, I can, I can be here at five, four thirty, but I mean, I know you're later, right, aren't you?
I'm not in September, I can be here by now.
Yes, I can be, but like four, forty-five is four forty.
What's your schedule like during November?
I haven't been in September yet.
Are you like in the afternoons though, like are you four thirty or five?
Yeah, I can do five, okay.
Would that work of five o'clock some?
Absolutely, what if we did Wednesday, the sixth, since it's the first Wednesday in September, we don't have a board meeting that day.
Love it.
We hit it right out of the gate. Five o'clock. I'm going to recommend an off-site to get us away from the distraction of the SAU office, and that certainly can be anywhere in the area, but if we could, just Maria and I can work on a, a location.
Great.
Post it, it's a work session. People are welcome to sit and, but there'll be no participation. So it'll be strictly retreat work.
So it would be, we said four hours, so five to nine?
Five to nine, just please. That would be fantastic.
Okay.
And so Maria and I will put our heads together and we'll come up with a location where we can have four hours of uninterrupted time to do our work and.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you, that's super helpful. Uh, another item I'd like to bring to the attention is that I've been a member of the ED three oh six task force, which have been the Hampshire State Standards the last couple of years, and we started listening sessions this spring, when I say we, I mean Fred Delmonte, Val Zancho and Nate Harris, uh, they've been traveling around the state at the invitation of superintendents and school boards to present on the changes that have taken place uh, within the state standards draft, uh, I believe they have done close to thirty at this point. We would very like to schedule uh, here, and we have a couple of things that I believe are available. I know, because I didn't put it in my report.
Just say, do you have a record?
You have.
Well, maybe then I could do that.
Karen and I had talked about it in spring because a bunch of us were going to go to Keene, but it was the night of your interview. I'll have to, because I'm going to reach out to Fred.
Yes, please.
He has September fifth, now this was, this was back in July when I emailed about it, so I'm sure this is over. That was fifth, sixth, thirteenth, fourteenth, nineteenth and twenty-first, but I think it's been one completely different. It's not just a meeting, Miller likes to have a vote form, if you will, right?
Yes, um, he likes to have a meal prior with superintendent of the board and anyone else would be invited from staff. And then it's more with form, it's not a board meeting, it's a presentation, so it will be his presentation that we're in attendance for. And it will be a forum that's, that involves discussion from folks in the audience, community members, we certainly invite area communities to, to join us, so we can serve as the, the presentation venue. So we would just need a a date for that, that board want to, to host that, because we do sponsor.
And we would invite other, we would invite Winchester, I think, because the Keens had it already, so the other towns have had it, but Winchester has not had it yet, I know that, I haven't had the presentation, I know they're interested, so I think it would be great to invite them to join us.
And I linked in the report under this particular heading. Uh, both, both school district, their presentation, what their flavor, what the. I just watched a little bit of that.
So I think the.
Can you repeat the date so much?
Sure, yeah.
September fifth, sixth, thirteenth, fourteenth, nineteenth and twenty-first. And he says he usually starts at five with the dinner or superintendent and board and then presentation at six thirty.
So we're, if we're following.
He gave you these dates in July?
Yeah.
So some of them might not be available anymore, so we pick what two and present in the two?
And this will obviously align with what we picked for a board meeting night, whether it's the second or the third Wednesday. So if it's the second Wednesday, that would be the thirteenth. If it's the third, it would be the night of the board. It would be the twentieth, so we could work around that with the nineteenth, the twenty-first. So we could do either the thirteenth, the nineteenth, the twenty-first.
I'm available.
You're not available any of those, so we just present all three of those to him and have him pick which one?
That would work, yeah, and see what works for him.
Okay, the thirteenth, you said, the nineteenth and the twenty-first?
Yes.
Is what, okay.
You can take that.
I'll take that, yeah.
Thank you very much. Super. Awesome. Another, uh, item that I thought would be helpful is, uh, am I learning more about uh, the community that we've not yet had the opportunity for, the New Hampshire School of Funding Fairness Project to come and present? Uh, it's again, it's a, it's a presentation on how school district budgets are funded in New Hampshire and the, the desperate treatment between property tax, excuse me, property rich towns and not so property rich towns and, uh, how unfair it actually is, it gets down to dollars and cents for our own community. When I was on the Hampshire Commission to Study School Funding, we worked with this group quite a bit regarding, not necessarily the revenue part of it, but the distribution of that revenue, the talent carry, so, um, I, I would recommend that we invite them to, to come and present and again opens up to, and it's something that I would want to work with Catherine on and have the town hall serve as a location. Uh, so that people can come and ask very direct questions about how Hinsdale gets funded from the state, whether it be state or federal dollars through, doesn't matter the grants or the operating budget, but really they go into depth about how the adequacy formula is developed. Have you seen it in Milford? Yeah, yeah, it's, it's pretty eye-opening for a lot of people, I think it'd be just another nice piece of education for all of us on how we're funding schools as we begin to to develop our budget for the point like five, so.
They were in Keene in the spring and we had a meeting, so we didn't go, but I heard it looked really good. Sorry, Taylor.
Should we do that closer to budget seeking, because that's when everyone's very passionate about budget and attendance might be higher and it would give all the knowledge during the time we're actually thinking about it.
Yeah, what would you think, what do you think, if we're ramping it up?
Depends when they let me go. Yeah, October.
Absolutely, October, so perhaps in the middle of October.
That's what I was thinking, October.
And I usually will do a breakdown on all my funding charges.
I will extend that invitation for some time in October and we can work around, um, our October board meeting. So if there's no comment, great. Uh, those are the highlights that I wanted to make sure that I spoke about. Uh, I al, oh, I also just want to say that, um, with the retirement of our school resource officer, uh, from last year, I met with Chief Portage, and he does have a commitment for it to have a school resource officer from day one. Uh, it may be a different officer for the first few weeks, but then we'll have a permanent officer in the building. So we will have a school resource officer back in this fall campus.
Please, will we need a new MOU for that?
Yeah, definitely.
An annual MOU, yes, so, uh, I have to, we have to find that copy.
I have it.
Outstanding.
I would love to see it.
Love to have it, yeah, because then we can, we can edit that and make sure that we're all up to speed on that.
Great.
And so those were the points that I wanted to highlight from the report that I've submitted. Well, to answer any questions.
I don't have any to send back, I don't have anything for David. No?
Well, I know I have a P A for that, how to proceed. I just, I just want to say that I really appreciate you being engaged in the community and talking to us before, you know, when we started, because that's never happened before, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, only if you're a brand new board member and you get like a fifteen-minute meeting, that's, that's.
Uh, yeah, well, no, I was, I was happy to, I'm happy to do it and continue to do it. I will say our opening convocation, which will be an opening day ceremony, but I do miss more. Is going to take place at the town hall. And that's a surprise to everyone, that's the way we want it. Because we want to tie in what we're doing in the school with the community, that connection to take place, because, um, we're all supporting the same goal and unless we're actually doing it, we're just saying it. So that's, that's, that's one thing, and I did want to kind of introduce Jane by putting her on the spot. Which is what we like to do, I just wanted her to kind of briefly talk about advocacy, I know I explained it here, but she can do it so much more justice. So.
Yeah, just, uh, quickly, the, the state has, uh, once again changed its advocacy funding formula. Uh, they have removed what used to be the third grade reading deficit as part of the funding that if you had, uh, students that were behind in it, you had, um, allocations, they've done away with that fee, but they have increased their, their base adequacy, they've increased the adequacy for reading reduced students. Um, so what that's pretty much going to end up doing, based on last year's estimate, that usually comes out in October, gets used during your budget process, you'll be getting about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars more than sharing.
Great.
And if I could piggyback on that, I was going to talk about it later, but I can jump in. Um, we all, well, whoever, we all should be on the NHSBA's mailing list, and so on, uh, August fourth, we got an email of the webinars. And they included one from the DOE, from the Bureau of School Finance, at the DOE, there's on September fifth and twelve to one, and if you sign up for these webinars, you can get the recordings if you can't make it in the afternoon, and they're going to be explaining all the whole new changes with adequacy on the fifth, um, there's a webinar, so I signed up for that and, um, so check, I can forward the email to anybody who doesn't have it, if you want to sign up for that.
So that would be my report?
Great, thank you very much. Um, new board business, we're, oh, we're teaching and learning, Karen, sorry, I skipped.
You have our report, um, three things I just wanted to speak to, one is, um, I, I'm really, really excited about our convocation. Um, I just, I know it's a little bit secret, but, um, I'm having a hard time keeping my mouth shut. Really excited, um, it's just, it feels like we're, we're where we need to be in terms of students having learning, and, and that's exciting for me and exciting for all of us, and really going to make, I think, set the stage for a year of really remembering our why, remembering that we're here for the kids, so, um, I think that's, that's wonderful, um. But the other thing I just wanted to add is that I didn't get, I didn't put in the report because I hadn't had the meeting yet, but I want to make sure that you're aware that we are doing a, um, MOU with the Hinsdale Police Department through my OSTCP grant for a, um, uh, police department, um, explorers program that will take part, uh, take place all year long. Um, our OSTCP is going to pay, help fund for a police officer to work with kids in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, so they'll, you'll be seeing a lot of boot camp um, type experiences happening outside on the grounds through September and October, probably mid-September through October. And I just wanted to make sure people are aware of that, so if you see kids running around, you know, with shields and stuff like that, I don't wonder what's happening. So we haven't sealed those, that, we haven't signed, Dave and I working on getting the MOU signed and working with Chief Portage to um, sort of market it to the middle school kids, but, um, it's just another way that we can personalize and, um, open up opportunities for ex-career, career-connected learning for our kids, so I'm excited about that. And Holly did sign up, uh, email me as a, wanting to be on the portrait of a learner committee, the core committee, so thank you, Holly, for that. They'll be doing the kickoff, um, at the opening day of school, but the core committee will really drive the work all year long with the hope of having the portrait completed with a lot of community members, so if anybody's interested, we'll have some places here. Uh, we'll, we'll be reaching out to folk, for focus groups throughout the whole year. Um, but our hope is to have, uh, all the data collected by March, and a portrait ready to present to the school board, at least by May, maybe by April, so. And that's my point.
Could I join as just a community?
Absolutely, you've got it, we don't have to ask twice, so, just let me know right now, yep, um, so, uh, the Carolyn Eastman is the person from NHLI who will be doing the focus group work, so you'll be, I'll be giving names to her very soon, so you'll be hearing from her. I think that's how it's going to play out, and the meetings will be, for the core committee, it'll be monthly focus groups probably once or twice throughout the year, so.
Great.
That's my question, um, and so, uh, the kickoff, when you say August twenty-ninth, I, I think it's clear enough from your major report, the, what you've been saying, so it's during the day, like the new teacher?
Yeah.
Returning teacher, everybody day.
Yes, so in the afternoon, they're going to work the kickoff for this, the entire district, it, staff and teachers will be in the afternoon. The kickoff for the core committee will happen, um, as soon as we have, uh, I, we need to gather a few more business people to get on that committee. Um, and we have to schedule time, that's, that's, and I can see it's already filling up fast, though, and the meetings will be in the evening, so.
But I just had to note, when it's a district kickoff, the twenty-ninth, that's the same date as the Hinsdale Elementary School, um, open house, but that's.
Oh, you're worried.
So I just wanted to make sure it was the same date.
No, it's in the afternoon, so, okay, awesome, thank you.
Any questions for Karen? Alright, thanks Karen. Uh, President was report. Mr. Burr.
So you have my report, um, it's been a busy summer trying to hire folks. Um, and it's been an extreme challenge, I talked to a colleague today in another district and they said, I just lost a music teacher, I lost a special education case manager, over a year, they've been trying to find a math teacher. Um, I think the people have been hired, right now, they're either getting, they're picking up this certification, they've been certified in other states like Vermont, Florida, things like that. Um, and our music teacher, he's in the process, um, to be, um, finishing up the certification, he was certified in Maine, so, uh, those are all good things, our business teacher, he's got work to do, but he was a certified teacher in Florida, and he has a business degree. So what I put on, you know, asterisks here, is just pending their certifications. But the biggie is we need a math teacher. That Luis Michael, you know, is left, and, uh, there's nobody there, so in my report, I talked about, um, this program Ed Menton, where they will hire a certified math teacher for us, and it would be remote, it could be three days a week. Um, and then we obviously would need somebody in that room to have these, uh, as a sub. Um, but they would do three days a week of direct instruction and then they would still have work that they, students would need to do to complete it, they do the grading. Um, they're in over almost eight thousand school districts, because everybody's having these same, you know, issues. Um, it's not cheap, but that's one potential option, and I wanted to throw that out, the other one is potentially, and the teachers, we only have two math teachers at the high school level, would have to agree to take on additional course and obviously get compensated for that. Because we have had no advocates. So, and it's affecting a lot of kids, you know, I put down here a minimum of sixty-four kids, because it's, um, algebra class is algebra two, um, and every kid needs algebra. So, uh, it's a critical need. So uh it's a critical need. Um, and I just, I wanna see what your feedback is, you know, moving forwards, we gotta get something in place. They emailed me today, it'd be four to six weeks before they would hire somebody, but they also have an, an academy option which they would give to us, and I have a handout from Ed Mentum, just what it looks like. And it's right on this same bell schedule, so that's kind of cool. So it doesn't disrupt kids and we have to move them to other, you know, periods. And then they get affected having to drop another course or trying to figure that out. But that is the critical piece right now at the middle high school.
So to start the school year, it would be under that?
Yeah.
The four to six weeks would be underneath that?
But we would start right off.
Right.
Yeah.
So sort of functions like V-Lax, kind of.
It, right, it's, the difference between this and V-Lax is that it's every day or three days a week. Where V-Lax is once, you know, once every couple of weeks, the teacher, it's not on a scheduled time. Um, which is helpful, in my opinion.
Especially for math, you know, they're on top of it, yeah.
Yeah, E-Lax is asynchronous, so very little interaction.
Right, this is both.
Right, so it's more direct instruction. Not the best solution we could have. The best solution would be having a certified teacher. But uh the best, worst decision we could make to make sure that we're providing instruction. Which again, thousands of other schools are offering it, not making excuses for it. Uh, we banged trees to find math teachers, we work our networks, personal networks. Vermont, Massachusetts, Southwest New Hampshire, and we, there are other school districts that have far more vacancies still today. Uh and not just in the southwest part of the state, it's across the state, so um I think it's a uh, a reasonable approach, not acceptable by any standard, but reasonable based on what you know, Mr. Barth was able to do and able to find in terms of substitution for math instruction. And we'll continue to actively look.
Yeah.
Right, but um we understand that it's not, it's not optimal.
I think we're gonna have a problem with that considering our reputation with our science classes last year. And the lack of trust that our parents have in us because of science, so this program seems a little bit similar. And if we're gonna have a sub, we're gonna need to have a long-term sub, and that sub's gonna have to have a mentor that is there, present, weekly, checking in, helping, guiding this sub into actually participating in the class and not as a babysitter. Or we're gonna have a lot of complaints like we did last year regarding.
My understanding is the person that we put in is a long-term sub, hit a long-term sub for mathematics a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Or teachers was out, was out, so, but you're right. Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna say it was, it was a horror show last year. Um, for science specifically, so that's why I'm, I'm excited with science now, you know, we have two certified, science teacher will, will be certified, and they're enthusiastic, and that's, you know, exciting for me. It's gonna help those students.
Can we do a combination of this and utilizing the math teachers? We do have, because those two days a week, I think just having a sub in there is not a good idea, because I just, I know from my own children how it goes when there are subs in the classroom. And I think the three days with a teacher on the screen even is gonna be more engagement indifferent, and those two days with just a step in there is gonna turn into chaos or kids on their phone. So if we could just have them in there those two days, then we're not overburdening as much the teachers we have, but then we're still giving stability to the kids.
Probably that won't work. Just because, just because their schedules. Now, there's another option, they could do all five days, just the cost. It's, it's more than a teacher.
Yeah, if they agree to it, have you taught, you said, have you asked them if they would?
I have not talked to, I may actually meet him next week, but one other day, yeah.
I mean, we've done that with other teachers too, you know, just pay them for the extra class.
For a whole teaching position usually, right? It's just like a class, this is.
They would do, that's what this would eat the math, each, each math teacher would take like another class, so they would be teaching six classes instead of five.
Right.
So. Requirement, then would it, if we have to cover algebra, algebra two, and I'm assuming maybe.
Yeah, no.
We have five math classes, we already shifted one.
Okay, so that's not really a solution.
Yeah.
We would have to put effort into this sub and pay attention to this sub, and we would have to be there to support this sub for these students to continue. I mean, these, these students that are gonna be taking this algebra class are behind in science currently, because what grade are we looking for for the math classes?
Algebra one, which is.
Yep, so.
Well, algebra one and algebra two.
So, yeah, I think that it, it's gonna require a lot of work. It sounds like to me that the remote person will be an actual teacher.
Yeah.
So it's not a long-term substitution like science was last year.
Right.
Right, so there's gonna be an actual teacher the other two days. Sounds like the teacher will have work for them to do those other two days with the sub, so it's not like they're just in there. Not having a plan together for it. That's my, that's what I'm hearing anyway from your, what you're saying.
With the same, so it was in there the three days.
Right, yeah, the sub's gonna be in there the all five days with the teacher. Teacher's gonna have a plan for the sub to do it on the two days, he's, they're not there, or she isn't there. So it's gonna be much more structured than I think the, science was like packets, which was a mess. And not, not the best solution. This seems like a much better solution to me as far as not having a math teacher, but we'll have a math teacher three days a week, the other two days, this that will have instructions from the math teacher to to do with them, so it's not, I'm feeling, I'm feeling much better about this than I was last year's science, personally.
And this isn't a final.
Right.
We're gonna continue to actively.
Right.
I mean, Keen State is gonna hate me by the time the twelfth semester. Graduates.
Right.
If we can have teachers doing five days a week for the class, how come they couldn't do two and still be paid a little extra and then have three planning period times on the days they're not in the classroom? Okay, so the three days are covered with the remote teacher and a sub. So I'm wondering why, if we could have a teacher do all five days and overburden our teachers, why couldn't they just do two days and make a little bit less and then have the planning time on the other three days?
They might not, they might not have an open spot. That, that math class is gonna be.
But if we're gonna put a teacher, if the other option was to have a teacher take another class on, they would just be taking half a class on. Like one of our other math teachers, that was the other plan, right, was to have math teachers take another class.
And we'd only be able to teach two of those five classes, right?
And they'd be doing one of their prep, so it would have to line up with their prep.
Yeah.
Right, but if that was one of the options, couldn't we try to see if some of the classes could be, especially like algebra one, you're gonna have the ninth graders coming in to high school, it's like to, I feel like we're setting them up for failure. So if one of our teachers could, like, could that be a goal that we try to have one of the math teachers covering those two days?
I mean, yeah, I mean, we can look at it, but it's gonna then, the master schedule is gonna change, and the kids that have other math classes, now they're gonna get displaced, uh potentially, if we have to move it to match.
Well, not moving things around, but just looking to see if it could.
We'll do that.
Yeah, I mean.
We'll look forward to that, see if the shift in the master schedule does have any ripple effects.
Right.
Typically at this stage in summer, it does, but it won't stop us.
Just, just to see, just in case.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And did you have a question, Owen? Um, so my, only other question is, like, if we went with this plan, the financing, cover that? So where does that money come from?
Well, you have that salary of the teacher.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Would it, would it cover that?
And you won't have to worry about health insurance.
Right, oh true.
New Hampshire retirement or any of those kinds of things.
Yeah.
So um.
Oh, yeah, definitely, I mean, that amount.
It looks comparable to teachers on.
Teacher salary, we're not paying the benefits, so yeah, we have that money.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we do need a vote on us, to, to vote on that tonight.
Um, I don't know what you typically would do for something like this, where it's an operations expense that you would need board action on it.
Oh, you're right, yeah, we have the money. If you didn't have the money, you'd have to vote to get it somewhere.
But what if we find a teacher halfway through the school year and we've spent that money, then how do we?
So that teacher would only be paid for the number of days left on it.
And it's gonna ma, and it's gonna be left over, because I mean, how much do we pay? Do we pay for the whole year, or can we only pay for a few months?
Pay for semesters.
Okay.
Just that.
They can stop it at any time.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll make sure, because we'll get a contract from them, so we'll have to make sure that that gets approved.
Yeah, we'll review that for, yeah, exclusion classes and separation classes as well.
I was gonna be my question to, let's not double pay for.
You don't have that kind of money?
No.
But the other piece is, we're still looking for a case manager. So if there's a salary there, um where Patty Wallace has done a nice job coming up with a plan. Uh, it's not ideal, but at least our kids will be covered. And like, if there's no case manager, that's even is.
The unicorn.
The number of people, or the number of school districts that were looking for case managers.
Right.
But we'll continue to look, and I, I try continuing, I can't keep state.
Right.
They have a great.
They do, but working on that works.
And so we're definitely going to be covering all of the students and all IEP requirements, even without a body.
So the case manager are gonna take on the IEPs, additional IEPs.
Oh boy, so we're probably gonna be looking for two soon. That's not ideal.
Anybody else, anything? Alright, moving on. Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Um, Joe's, Mr. Buleo is not here, but we have his report. Anybody have any questions about Joe's report?
I was gonna ask about the plans for when the S R three was ending, but I don't know if any.
Maybe.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's just um the project's coming to an end September two thousand twenty-four, so I know that our, the bathroom supports several, so what's going to be the plan for those students when that room is no longer available?
Um, I do not have the exact, I know Patty and Joe have worked on a plan for that, because we've been paying attention to that fiscal cliff. I'm making sure there's not gonna be one, so I, I don't know the exact plan, but I know that Patty has worked on a way to distribute. I, I will say I'm a little concerned now with less case managers, how that's gonna work out, but I know that um Joe and Patty are very aware that the money's gone.
Right.
I mean, S R two's gone in less of forty days now, so we'll be cleaning that up, and then S R three is um that's not on our radar for about a year, so I know that Patty's been very aware that.
Cause that's gonna be potential tuition.
Yeah, let's hope not, that's what, she's really trying to avoid that tuition piece.
Anybody else have anything? Nope, alright. Um, and then Justin is also not here, what we have is report. I didn't have anything, did anyone else, I think Justin have, um free and reduced lunch prices is next on my, in my packet, but.
Oh, so I was really distracted. I did have, uh, the cameras not being ready yet. I was just wondering, are we prioritizing Paul Wains near bathrooms, doing vaping is a big concern?
So, yeah, so they're actually, they're, they're working with P A system, which will so that one is almost done, it'll be done probably Monday, Eric is gonna get trained on the P A system. They play some nice music.
They did. I heard that, I was here that day.
And uh, and the cameras, there's, the gentleman was out here today with Justin, looking in the building, so. Yeah.
So that's going faster than anticipated.
Yeah.
Alright, we're all set on the technology now. Most of us. Um, did you have something to say about it? A new board business. I see that in my packet, we have free and reduced prices, but I don't see it on my list of stuff, what do I do, right there? Alright. Sorry. Um, so the board meeting dates, so we were doing on the first um Wednesday because him it couldn't do this, we were doing second Wednesday normally, right? And he couldn't do that, so we switched it, so we're wanting to see if we wanna move it back to the second.
Definitely off the first.
Off the first, it doesn't work.
It messes up the.
Anyway.
Financial stuff, never really. Yeah.
Um, so the option basically would be the second or the third Wednesday, what's everybody's?
Is budget, isn't it, during the season?
Budget's kind of been all over the place at the moment, but, so if we wanna put it back to the second, does that work for everybody? Work for you guys? So move it back to the second Wednesday of every month.
Well, we'll just have to wait for September though, because it might be the second or third.
That's all we know about.
Right, we can, we can just eliminate the thirteenth as standards night, that can be the board night, the thirteenth.
I think it was the nineteenth twenty first. That was an option, but we didn't land on that.
And we're doing six still?
Six, yeah, that's the worst for everybody, right? Alright, and we already set the date for the board.
So I have a question, this is goal setting, which is different than the retreat, do we wanna do goal setting? The last time we did, I can't remember what month we did it, when we did the vision and the mission and all that and goals.
I think I didn't.
We've had all over the place, sometimes we've done it in the fall, sometimes we've done it like in the summer, in the spring, like before school ended, but it was too crazy this year to do it in the spring, so.
Got a little transition.
Yeah, it's a little.
By after or beginning of October four?
That was last time.
Last year.
Twenty twenty-two was September twenty eighth. Maybe after our Lord retreat, then we'll have a better idea.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, after the retreat.
Do you wanna wait and set the date at that retreat? That works, everybody, because it'll be a little more. Alright, in this superintendent search discussion, so we need to get in contact with the people that were on the committee last fall, and see if they're still committed to being on the committee, and if they're not, then we need to send out a notice to get people that can't still commit to it for this year.
People, uh, because the teach, like, the admins and people who buy our policy are on it, are on it, whether they wanna be or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think checking in with everyone wouldn't.
No, but yeah, but I think says, you know, the superintendent. That's why they definitely said the administration, so we check in with the community members. And the staff members, but yeah, but those who are by, by, yeah. Like, you're only one superintendent, you're only one B A, you know what I mean, so they have to be. Well, I'm a superintendent, you're not, sorry, because it's superintendent search, the B A and you.
So I'd like to give Maria permission to get in contact with the, that um committee and start that process, because we should set up a time that I would think in October to have, have a meeting if not.
Yeah, I spoke with Michelle and um from the Brian group, and she is, you know, once we've get the people who are gonna be on the committee set, um then she wants. Get the people who are gonna be on the committee set, um, then she wants to start in, you know, late September or early October. And she said it'd only be, it should be only a handful of meetings at the most. I mean, even that's with interviews even probably because she, we just wanna ninety nine percent of it is done. We had it done, we were doing interviews, so. She just wants us to revisit it to see if our competencies and all all those things are the same or if after having. Interims, if maybe some of our priorities have changed, you know, if that's how you worded it, so. There's really only four people, the two teachers and the two community members. I mean, that that might change.
There's something to add here to do this, Maria. Yeah, that would be the earliest, I would think, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, free and reduced prices. Yeah, we, yeah, I was looking at my stuff and we discussed it with the contract that we accepted. So this is just to inform us, I think, really at this point.
It just needs to get updated in the handbook, cause it was different ever in our meeting, yeah.
Alright, then we're on to job descriptions.
It's funny, Sean said that, cause I was reading these and I was like, whoa, that is overwhelming to read.
I will say, cause it was my first personnel meeting in a long time, cause I'm back on that now and. My understanding was, and it was Sean and Julia had been on it the last couple of years, but with these, um. I think they came, the changes and and suggestions came mostly from Kim. I don't know if Jody was involved because they were both on personnel as well, so. It it was not the board, we didn't come up with any of this. They were recommendations from the previous administration, so. But I, and I don't, I do not disagree with what Sean was saying, but.
Just reading it, so. Being responsible.
Our administration not necessarily in agreement with the changes that have been suggested, both from an S A U office organizational aspect and job.
Oh, so that's good to know. So we shouldn't be approving these to people doing the work, don't agree. My opinion.
Right, yes. I agree.
That's.
Oh, except for the administrative assistant one, cause that one came to the. David was involved with that, you know, yeah, I think that one, is that one on the list to approve, cause that one, we, I I think we did. It is, so we can get that close with.
It's very micromanaging. All of it is actually.
What's micromanaging about it? That we have to approve job descriptions? Cause that's.
No, it's just, it's. It's overwhelming, and I think that it's. I think obviously it should be detailed, but I think Sean's right in that it's a, it seems like a change and a change and a change and a change and a change, and we expect them to. Keep up with everything. And then we throw more, and they're still trying to catch up from what we just changed before, and they're still trying to read it, and they're still trying to figure it out, and they're. Still trying to adjust their schedules and their way of thinking to do what they've already been doing. The way that they've been doing it, and now we're like, hmm, I know we said to do it that way, but now we want you to do it this way, and then we're gonna change it again, and we're gonna. It's it's just so much going on in our school right now as it is. Without changing more and more and more.
Well, we're not telling them how to do it. They're just listing what needs to be done, and and this came from Kim. So um, and the board legally has to approve job description, so we need to have something. Whether we change it or not, we can leave it how it was.
I I.
You know.
I'm requesting, asking for he can leave it as they are and as we do a transition to a permanent superintendent. That person and I, she or he and I could then. Work through the entire S A U uh with the people who work in the S A U to determine what change can be made based on any. But I think that some of the stability that we're talking about is. Because we have. To be, and I've shared this more. Regarding curriculum instruction and assessment that we really wanna focus on, take some. More than we wanna focus on the adults.
So the, and and I and I totally agree, like I said, these came from him. So, but the director of personalized learning one, now that's changed from before. A bunch of times, right? And then like now Karen's back in that job, so is this, if the pre, like if we say we are gonna. Do A, B, and C, go back to what they were before June when we did a first reading, right? Is that what you're saying? What it was before, cause we looked at this in June, these updated ones that Kim brought to personnel. So if we go back to the director of personalized learning job description, and I don't know, maybe it's fine, but. Things have changed, cause we got rid of that position sort of, cause then you began teaching and learning. There was no director of personalized learning, so are you. We just going back to that? Do you know what I mean? I'm just, does that make sense, my question? Cause since you're the director or going to be or are or.
Uh, I see the the latter head says director of teaching learning, that is too. I was told that it was moved, my title moved to director.
So I was surprised when I saw it on on everything.
Yeah, and in my mind, the it, I was assuming it was going back to. When we had the part-time, when Karen Craig was here and I was here. Those are the two positions that we were solidifying, so. It didn't need to be a big change in my mind.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't think there needed to be a ton of changes in it. I think. That there, when things were all transitioning, um, there was some need for. I think as Kendra just said, some of us to take, other things were being added and added, and. That sometimes can get confusing and all of it overwhelming.
Yeah.
So I I would agree with Dr. Ryan that, you know, to have a year to. For him to look it over and for whoever's coming in to sit and have some discussions around what's working best would be. Quickly my, because I I it would be nice to know exactly what my title is.
That's what I thought it was, director of personalized learning, but yeah, it goes up teaching and learning.
And I and I don't, I I don't say that in in any disrespect to anyone. I just, I I just feel like there's a lot of. And not just in my job description and others, it needed to be. There's a lot to figure out. There's a lot to tease out and all those things, so.
Yeah, I mean, I thought your contract says. Okay, that's the only one I questioned. Is it okay to go back to what it was before it changed?
I would make.
Alright, yeah.
But I don't get to make that decision.
I think the focus of Karen Cole is gonna be on creating more experiences for students that don't currently exist. So that speaks to E L O or.
It speaks to student learning. It speaks to making sure that the, you know.
Pollack and um and our current um administrative system for preschool. Not human resources and not business. Um, when the effort on on looking at our curriculum management plan and on where we are vertically and across grade spans with our frequently. We need her focus on that one percent and the word Karen's role. So regardless of her title and. Her focus is gonna be all about student.
Which is what, which is what your description was last time.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the most part.
And that's what we.
So would it be appropriate to make a motion to table job descriptions, A, B, and C? And then what approved the final reading of D, administrative assistant, right? Cause that's one that's replacing Cheryl.
That's why we just don't have the job description for.
There was the final review of that, right? So as a final reading, we need to do that, and we can table the other three, cause that makes, is that what we're saying? Okay, so.
That one just seemed like you only have to have a couple of.
Charlie was doing.
Yeah, so it's basically Shirley.
You may. Seems like a lot to do.
Oh, this is Paul.
So that's always. Thank you, Maria. Yeah, so I'll make, I'll make the motion to table all four of those job descriptions, that's not Shirley.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, second. Oh, did you? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So. So the, um, we have a final reading of the admission of tuition on residential students policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I just had a couple of grammatical things on it. In the very last, on the, on the first page in the bottom, the approval must be made by that district's school board. Made by should be entered into that. And the border. And then just an S on the end of states in the third to the last on that same page. Anybody else have anything else?
I also had a couple of grammatical things for the second paragraph. It says if a student's parents are divorced. And then the next line uh within the district and be.
Yeah, be or is or yeah, something.
Anything else? So we just need a motion to approve the final reading with these adjustments. Second. Who was second?
I thought we already made the motions.
With the, with the changes.
With the changes.
The world changes.
This is the final reading of this.
So we can, okay.
Right.
Okay, alright.
Didn't we get a second? Sorry, your second is Gina, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Other business.
I have one thing, if you guys don't mind. I know we talked about this a couple of months ago. I don't I don't recall. When, but have all the teachers been given their assignments now?
Yeah.
Everybody knows? I'm hearing otherwise.
They may not be happy.
No, I'm hearing that they don't know what their assignments. Thank you.
Tell me who, then I'll.
Any other, anything else? Anybody has? Alright, going on to committee reports. So I want us to have a discussion about committees and what's mandated by law and what's. Optional, I guess. So I had, um, everybody should have a list of what we have for committees. Cause we have a lot of them, and I just wanna make sure that everybody feels like we need them all or we don't. Or to be on them, the school board themselves. So if we just go through it. Um, the ones that are mandated by law are person, personnel. Many, the finance budget committee. Health and wellness.
That's my policy.
Well, I just, I just said law for.
Yeah.
For um, and HASP.
Our HASP is required for the grant.
Right. So the ones that were created in the past five years by the board. Um, was the policy committee, the behavioral support. Legislative, community connections, and the tuition exploratory committee. And also the, it'd also be the superintendent committee. Um, and the other ones we have are facility, selectmen, staff development, joint loss. Oh, and there's a serp. My thought is that we don't need to be on joint loss. Or staff development. Because I feel like staff development is not our purview per se. And we can get reports on that. We don't necessarily need to be on the committee. I don't know how, if we're gonna just discuss about that one, how everybody feels about that.
I I remember way back in, you know, when I was first on the board, the board member was on that mostly because of the master plan. To be, have a board member involved with the master plan.
Have a person um be on that, because of the master plan to list them on that, so they're aware of it.
Yeah, so the state has a board member listed on, you know, when we submit it to the state.
So could they be on it and? Get reported to? I don't know that, so you know, if it would help to lessen the amount of meetings for you guys, but it does. That's why there there's somebody listed there.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Is that for joint law?
No, that's.
That's for staff development. And then my other, so then, so then if we do need somebody on there, I'm fine with having somebody on there. I just wanted to have a discussion about it.
Yeah, we only need one, so there's two people listed, so I think there's one alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a backup.
Yeah. So then, um, and then joint loss, that also I feel like can just be a report to the board, you know?
It's not necessary.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago, we were told it was weird, but.
I think the word employer might have triggered that for you, but your only employee is me, and I would be on it anyway, so.
Right. So we can get rid of joint loss. That's one less for Kendra. Good job.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can I just back up? I'm sorry.
Sure.
So we're gonna keep somebody, I'm still gonna invite a person to the meeting, or I'm just gonna report to the.
For joint loss or.
For staff development. I think.
I mean, it's fine.
I think it's gonna be up to the person who's on it.
Okay, it's okay.
I'm on it, so I guess I won't worry if I can't make it.
Okay, and I can just.
Those were the two I felt like the most that I wanted to discuss. I don't know if anybody else has any, any of them. I mean, I feel like we wanna keep community connections. That's something we made, and I think it's important. Legislative, I think, is important for us to. And have somebody focused on what's happening at the state and and report to the board on that. Um, behavioral support, I know is important when we made that policy, obviously. And the tuition exploratory and the superintendent search was also, you know, they're temporary, but they're necessary at this point. Um, selectman, I think it's good to have that as an open communication with the town between us and the and the town, so I think it's important to keep that. And facilities, I think, is 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 um. I like being on it, cause budget season and knowing what's gonna be needed in the school and having um firsthand knowledge of it as far as the board's concerned. I think it's important. So those are my opinions on everything. I don't know if anybody else has any other opinions on anything.
I was wondering about, so for selectmen, I know, you know, way back when, when I was on the board before, we were doing. I wanna say it was like twice a year, once a year, we were meeting with them, like jointly. Um, are we still doing that?
We haven't for a while. Mike Darcy, I think, might have been the chair last, so I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it was a few years that that happened.
That may be a little bit more effective than. Just having someone.
But there are things that happen at the meeting, like I've been reading their minutes all summer, and there are things that are helpful for us to know, that they talk about things directly involving the school. Their meeting, and we haven't had anybody there, so, you know, I think it's good to have, they haven't had their rep to our meeting since, I think, March, that they're zooming in as well, so. We haven't had anybody since March, so.
Well, that's why I was wondering if it would be more effective to meet with them jointly.
I think in addition to have, having a rep go, cause really, we only have to go once a month, you know, the meeting or the meeting at. One meeting or two, second meeting after our meeting to let them know what happens. But we, you know, it could go more often. Sean used to go every week.
He was committed.
But he had other things, so he had other reasons too from other committees.
I think it would be helpful to have um. A meeting with the board and the selectmen at least once a year, if not twice a year. I didn't know that they used to do that, so. I think that would be a good thing, so I think we should approach the selectman maybe about having some meeting like that some point this year.
Based on my competition, I sit at the chair.
Yeah. Yeah, cause I think that would be good. Plus also, I mean, I mean, it also is goo- good to have somebody at meetings, you know, at least once a month to try to get some information.
They used to send somebody to.
To us, yeah.
Be over communication both ways.
Right.
Yeah, so. I was, you know.
So maybe we can get that restarted.
Yeah. The only one I haven't had was finance. I know in my email, I listed that for that finance slash budget, cause that's how it's on our agenda, but. Wayne actually started the finance committee. He brought it to us like three years ago, so finance isn't required by law, like we are required to be on the budget committee. Um, but it goes hand in hand, so. I don't know, and we didn't do anything with finance this year. Usually finance would meet in the summer.
Right. Right.
One of my recommendations is finance, we need the body of the whole. So a financial report is always being delivered to the board as a whole. And so the need to have a finance committee is erased because nothing, it's gonna be approved unless the board approves it as a whole. So we kind of duplicate, I thought we would be duplicating efforts by having a finance committee and then having a financial report delivered to the board. We actually found that in previous two districts I've worked in, where we only did the finance. Because everything was being handled by the full board anyway.
Okay, so it just becomes the budget.
Yes, a finance committee. And superintendent search will be done by January, so that'll.
Right. One last thing.
Yeah, that's a good question. Is your budget committee elected budget?
Yeah.
So do you have one member that, or two members that, that share one vote or how is that?
I am the primary on the budget committee and then I think Kendra's my backup.
Sorry, I was talking. What was that?
That you're the backup to the budget, basically. So is everybody fine with that list of budget? I mean, um, sorry. Thank you, committees. Alright. Alright, so then we'll move forward with that. Thank you. Alright, so to go through our. Mini reports, personnel committee. We meet on the twenty second, I think it's March, at three thirty.
Have we received the intent to bargain from the support staff yet?
No, we have not. I met with Sir Director Rachel Hawkinson. About three weeks ago, she anticipates that arriving shortly, because they do have to supply at least thirty days, want to go to bargaining. They're prepared to, and she's, she's prepared to assess.
Okay. Alright, health and wellness.
We haven't had a meeting for a while. It's still on my calendar that we're supposed to be having a health fair.
On the sixteen, sixteen.
Well, they had a subcommittee. Handling that. Handling.
He was a contact in the article, yeah.
Cause I was like, my God, we haven't had a meeting and I don't know what's happening.
It's being.
Okay. It's being handled.
Oh, great.
Last I, last I knew that was.
Cool. But no, we haven't had a full meeting.
Do you have one scheduled?
One is scheduled. No, you didn't. So, that's a Joe. I think Joe is kind of.
Okay.
Joe is kind of the chair. So that was, I think that was one of the main issues was.
I'll make a point to talk to Sarah.
Okay.
Alright, finance budget, we meet, we meet tomorrow. With the budget committee. I know they have. On the agenda for them is. Yeah, yeah, I know. It's always me. School grants and COVID money. Is on the agenda. I'm not sure what they're gonna be looking for exactly for information on that, but. That's tomorrow. And then staff development.
I don't have a meeting written.
No, we usually start them in October. And we do it four, we do four throughout the year. So I will. Schedule four meetings. I just haven't started those meetings yet. We start the first, will happen, yes, in the first week of October.
Alright, and then legislation and S, yay.
Um, so for the NHSBA piece of it, the delegate assembly is on October fourteenth. And I'm gonna go, Jim used to go and be our delegate and I'm on the board. I could, and last year I was the delegate and. You know, I'm there for being on the board. So if anybody wants to go and be the delegate, just, you know, let. Maria know and she can register you and let me know. We can go over together. If not, I can just be the delegate and the board, you know, be on their board. So it's on the fourteenth of October. We have a board meeting next week to go over the resolutions. Then I'll make sure they're in the September packet so that we can vote on them. For the legislative piece, so the NHSBA on August fourth sent out an email that I talked about earlier. So it has that, that one about adequacy in it, that webinar, but there are also several other webinars. You know, the legislative summary, so they did a, a brief summary because they're still working through it because there was over two hundred and fifty proposed bills. Not all of them made it through the impact of education. So, but there were a lot of them that did. So they are gonna send out, working on their legislative update, and then there's two webinars to, one to review it. A recap, and then there's another webinar on, like the next week, to talk about how it impacts policies and processes, like a lot of the new laws. So just, you know, you can, you can sign up on their website or let Maria know, and she can let Amanda know, if you want to sign up for any of them. That's all I had.
Yeah, I'd signed up for the adequacy one and, I have it on the fifth. Is it the fifth or the fourth?
Uh, well, the fourth, August fourth is when she sent the email. The, the webinar is September fifth at twelve P M.
Yeah, that's what I got. Alright, and then. Me, pass, which we have not met. Okay. Selectmen, how many have a go?
Me as well, when I haven't been.
I was gonna say, on our minute, or on our agenda for tonight, it says Kay Hamlow that just.
Yeah, I made a note to let.
Thanks, Kail.
I didn't catch it till I was looking at it today, actually. Facilities, we, we, well, I kinda met with Sean. I thought we were supposed to have a meeting, but I was the only one that showed up. And nobody was here, so, so we got, I, I talked to Sean for a little bit. On the twenty first of July, and then I'm not sure when our next meeting is scheduled, so.
And I'm gonna have to go off of that because it's in the middle of the day and my schedule has changed, so I can't do that at all. I can't even zoom into them. During the workday now.
Do we need two of us on here?
We need a, we need a backup.
When do they normally happen?
Uh, four thirty.
No, those are like a two fifteen or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. And I can always make it them, so. Were you? Was I, did I just miss it? That's right, that's right.
We had another meeting.
That's right, we did. It was the one before that or something. I was on a wrong day, sorry.
Yeah, because I was here and left because I'm like, I gotta go back to work. What do you mean? Yeah.
You're right, you're right. I do remember it now. I'm a little brain fogged, sorry.
I can be the backup for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Begging you.
Since you took out one, I guess.
Since she knows she'll never have to be the backup. I could, I could die. You, you could have to make it. Behavioral support team. Oh, community connection, sorry, sorry, I am a little off today. If we can get any beginning of school information to put out on the community connections, I would appreciate that from the elementary school. I mean, I get high school because I have a kid in high school. I don't get elementary school information a lot. I did put out that, that the open house was. Gonna be coming up for the elementary school. I can't remember exactly what I've just posted. Does anybody help me out? There was a couple of different things, yeah. About stuff happening for the beginning of school. So if I can just get, if there's a lot going on. I would love to be able to tell everybody about it, basically.
And I was happy to read in your report, David, that that's gonna be one of your focuses with the communication plan. And I just still let the board know too, I don't know. Kayla should remember this. Kendra wasn't, because she wasn't here, but the big communication plan that Sean.
Sean, yeah.
Yeah, so and David's report made it sound like we never had a communication plan, so I'm surprised nobody had been talking about it, but I forwarded it on to him, so he has that, so they're gonna. Try to, you know, see if that fits in. But I was glad to hear because at every single meeting April and I ask. For community connections and Maria's good about sending us some stuff, but we don't get too much. So I'm really glad that that's gonna be a focus.
It was for staff members that wanna kind of jump on a. S A U communications group and push out a positive.
Yeah, we can use Facebook. We do the Facebook page, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm excited.
I would recommend that when we have, thank you for sending that communications plan to me. Maybe adjusting it, making some adjustments in it. The board, I think, is amenable to it through moving some of the COVID. Information from it, which I think was a big driver for that plan, implementing some other methods for how we can traffic information in. As well as out, so getting information in from our community members, I think is a really big part.
Yes. Yeah. Alright, now behavioral support, sorry.
So I wrote that we're gonna have a meeting at nine thirty A M on Tuesday or Thursday, the second week of September, but I don't.
We don't have a certain date yet.
Yeah. So, and nobody from that committee is here, so. So whenever that date is firm.
So the plan is to nail down a date, I'm not in here.
Yeah.
Great.
I have a feeling when school starts and.
Yeah.
It's at the second week, Tuesday or Thursday. Yes, I'm assuming they'll figure it out. As school's starting and schedules are. Yeah.
Alright, joint loss, Kendra. We haven't met and I won't meet with them anymore. Perfect. Uh, policy committee.
Uh, we did not meet over the summer, so now that school's back, I'm gonna send an email to members in the committee. We wanted, we were talking in the spring about, you know, we, we did the self-love policy, the board approved that, so we wanted to look at, start to look at the. Dress code and talk about how to get, you know, like we did last time, some students, just like with the self-love policy, we had the student leadership team were involved. So we're gonna talk about that.
Superintendent committee, search committee, we basically discussed that earlier. Yeah. Tuition exploratory committee, from me and Jane and David are meeting with Winchester tomorrow. Yep, is our meeting with them. I don't know what the committee has.
I feel like we've, we've had pretty good meetings and we've, I feel like. Everybody's kind of on the same board and where we're, we were anxiously trying to get. The meeting to, for you guys to go over and talk about it and figure out if it's even doable for us, so. I think that's kind of what we're waiting on, right?
Where I wasn't, remember I wasn't able to make that meeting because it was. Till forever.
Yes.
But you're, I was there, Kendra, and that's what we were waiting.
Yeah, we were.
Know that there's community members on, on the committee that are waiting to hear. They have reached out to say what's next, so we'll want to make sure that we.
Winchester wanted to hear directly from our school board, their mouth. And I think we wanted that as well, so we were just waiting for the scheduling to work out, Maria to figure out the day and whatever, and you. Got it, and so that's our next step, and that's what we're waiting for, for the meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Alright, then we'll open it up to citizens' comments. Does anybody in the room have anything?
Got so many.
I have a list, but I don't know if you want them all at once.
One at a time is good. One at a time is good.
We'll have to look in.
We'll have to find out.
Exact number.
Because, because of the transition between the VAs, everything's behind, so we don't even have our year end yet.
Expenditure reports from April through June and then July through September of this new year were to maybe ban.
The June and, I'm sorry, April, June and.
April, May, June of last year's pass, and then July through September. Or basically close down and start up.
I know they can, you can do a write to know for that.
But shouldn't those be in our.
Put somewhere.
Those are in our minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but for the public to get them, they'd have to do a write to know, because. You know, we don't post on the website. The town doesn't post theirs on the website, I don't believe, so.
What we've been in our packets, we have.
But after, after we, once you receive the pack.
Yes, public, yeah, so that's what I'm saying. He would just, he would just have to do a write to know for it, yeah.
You have to do that.
Have we come up with a tuition cost for students coming from out of town?
We can not get the answer in March again, because we don't know it, actually nothing.
Yep.
I think that was last meeting, right?
Yeah, well, and we matched for non-sped students, we matched Winchester, what Winchester is paying keen. I can find that. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I have it. I know I have it here.
And then the specialized kits are case to case based.
Yeah, they're negotiating.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Yeah, actually, it might be in.
It should be in minutes from last.
Minutes, so.
From June, from June's minutes, yeah.
Actually, we might have it right here.
I have it right here. Yep, because we did talk about that.
I wanna say sixteen.
Or was that in, I'm not even gonna get.
Yeah.
Ray was discussing early on, May twenty fourth meeting.
So it's May.
May twenty fourth meeting.
We need our main minute. So we need our main minute.
Okay.
But we're gonna post it on. And. I guess you guys answered it, but we're kind of backed into a corner here about the contractual obligation with this math feature thing. You guys aren't gonna meet for another month. And obviously the trade is gonna get pulled on this deal. And obviously it's gonna be more expensive than a teacher to have five days, so you're looking at three days. How do we get ahead of that runaway horse? If we do get a teacher that comes in and sends air certified and we can hire them and not get caught back into a corner, we're worth paying twice.
I think we discussed that earlier.
Yeah, that contracted though, send, I mean, I had to wait till tonight to see where we wanted to go with it. And then I'll forward to Dr. Ryan and Jay before, because I'm not gonna be the one signing.
Yeah, and, and I, and I understand that, so that I, I kind of find it kind of bothersome to be truthfully honest, that. We are two weeks before school started and this is the first time this idea had been brought up and the fact that we were in trouble with it. I, I think that maybe some more focus on the school board and less focus about a hundred different committees. And maybe meet a little more often, so we don't get caught like this, where we're making a decision, we're making a decision on behalf to.
We had no applicants.
Yeah, right, yeah, but you found out about it tonight, two weeks before.
But also, I think that the savings that we're gonna have without the benefits will kind of balance it out. Because we don't have to pay for health insurance.
Thousand dollars a person, budget wise, between salary and benefits.
Yeah.
For around the outnumber.
Well, hopefully they'll be close.
Well, this is only fifty seven thousand compared to the salary benefits, like you said. Sub.
So.
That was including the sub.
Fifty seven thousand plus.
With the sub.
It included both.
And you are right, you know, two weeks away, but back early August, I met with them through the webinar. And then Karen, myself, and Chris Ponce met with them again, trying to find out what we knew we didn't have enough.
I just, I, I, I'm just, I mean, two, two weeks is.
And we had.
Theory to the point where even if it was a hundred and fifty thousand, we're gonna have to do something. We, we can't go into the year with no, with no math features, so it's.
So you're really more concerned about the, the notification, the timing of it.
The timing of it, and I mean, it, it comes down to it. So during budget season, during the summer, the selectmen meet every other week. Unfortunately, the summertime for school board is the important time. You're hiring, replacing.
Wait, he has authority to hire during the summer.
I understand that he has authority to hire. We're sitting in a meeting two weeks before school starts and we're making a decision. I'm saying that is that considered like your busy time? Should we be meeting more so that we're like, oh yeah, we're still in trouble with the math? But you know, selecting me weekly for a six point six million dollar budget. This budget is three times that.
We, we had a work session a couple of weeks ago.
We do meet during the.
We, we've had a few work sessions and they apprised, the captain was surprised of, we're, we're not finding people. So like you said, this was just. This admentum thing, you guys had your meetings with them just three weeks ago, so.
I just think it's a runaway horse that, you know, assign guests, is it semesters that we're gonna have a contract with this company? When we do hire a teacher, at that point, how long do we pay like to a cancellation? Because they gotta hire a teacher, right? The whole point is, they have to hire a teacher, so they gotta get a teacher to agree. So there's no way that we can pull the, pull the plug on it and say, oh, we're all set, we found one. I mean, maybe, but cancellation fees work.
And that's what we'll find out when we get the contract.
And you have a pretty chance of the rest of my questions. Well, thank you.
Have your nature of.
Thank you, Wayne.
Anybody else have anything? Anybody online have any comment?
There's nothing about the sub, John, is the one that helps the students that have any questions and helps with the one on ones, about the sub in the bathroom.
Yeah, so that's uh would be part of that, the assist kids.
But not, a one on one is different. Yeah, I'm not. They wouldn't be helping. You can't help with a one on one and be in charge of the classroom.
Not a one on one parent.
I am unmuted at this point, yes.
Do you wanna clarify the question?
Yeah, so my question is, I I'm trying to, so. Uh I'm assuming, and I'm trying to make sure I understood it correctly, the sub is there to help the students. When the teacher gives direction online, is that is that partially correct?
Yes, that that is definitely correct. I can't just leave seventy.
Okay.
Room.
Correct, okay. So so my 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 question goes along with. Let's say you have this internet teacher who's teaching stuff to these kids. If these kids, like, they need to stop, they have a question. Or maybe the online teacher isn't there and it's a day off for the online teacher. So the substitute is doing whatever. How do those kids, how are those kids able to communicate with the teacher in a way where they can stop? And make sure they have a clear understanding so they don't get left behind.
They'll be able to see each other, right?
Just like we can see you when you raise your hand.
Just like with remote learning when we had it.
Okay, I mean, and and that was my big concern. I know uh I had one of my children last year who struggled in uh in in math in particular. And they had a hard time communicating with the teacher as far as making contact or communication, whether that fell on my child or the teacher. Uh you know, I'm not quite sure. I think my my child was a little apprehensive about reaching out for attention. So I'm just concerned that. You know, having a remote teacher. Uh just puts that little bit more of a roadblock in there. So tha- that's my concern um when it comes to that. Uh that portion, I guess.
What would the expectation be for kids who maybe stay after school for added support? Who would help in that case?
That's a good question. I don't I don't have an answer for you at the moment. I mean, we do have other math teachers, two other math teachers that are around. Um and more than really the assist kids. So. Yeah, we have to just have our here. Here you can go to this teacher, you can go to this teacher, a split of the days.
And I would have a discussion with the teacher's students so they're anticipating. That also students who aren't their students might be coming to them.
Yeah, to help.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've already been in touch with one of the high school math teachers to to discuss something.
Are we taking advantage of tutor dot com sponsored through Department of Education?
We haven't officially, no.
Okay, so that would be something I would recognize that we're gonna look at too. That's free tutoring for all students across all school districts. In the state that are in in math, algebra one, and writing at the two most used tutoring sessions uh across the state by far. Um I'll also look at negotiating with that best of if there's after school tutoring time built in with that teacher so that students have access to. So we'll.
We could probably utilize some of our older students as well who are gifted in math. Um to be coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
National Honor Society needs service hours.
Did you have anything else, Alex?
Um. I I think maybe we decide no, but I we'll we'll talk about it tomorrow. It was just about when is the budget? Uh when is your budget group gonna start meeting up? Uh but again, we we can discuss that tomorrow. That's not really pressing for today. Um I I don't think I have anything else. I I think I agree with the timing of like trying to make a decision on this remote. Um I think it's just with two weeks to go. I think that's really short. And this is gonna be really hard press on the school. You know, like kind of like have to make a decision very quickly. Um so uh. That's my two cents on it. I don't think I have anything really else to say right now.
Thank you.
Sean, do you have any comments?
Uh yeah, I just wanna uh you know, thank the board for, you know, really having a good discussion on those uh job descriptions. I was actually. Kind of relieved uh when I heard you guys having some of the same concerns um that I had. I kind of was hesitant to bring it up. I thought I was kind of being a squeaky wheel, but having looked at so many of them, um I felt like I had to say something. So uh thank you for for listening. And um kind of agreeing, so um. And I'm just gonna chime in a little bit on the whole, you know, online stuff too. I I I having been the chair during COVID and dealing with all that online stuff. Um and I probably don't need to remind anybody else who was on the board or, you know, doing anything in education during COVID. Um you know, it's, you know, you know, when you're dealing with the stuff online, teaching online, online instruction. Um it it does take a certain degree of self motivation and self regulation on the student's part. And unless something has dramatically changed since March, um we know that we have issues uh with students and self regulation. So I I I don't have any kind of recommendation. I think that we gotta do what we gotta do. Um you know, I think we're thinking outside the box and and that's good. I just, you know, hope that some of the drawbacks that we saw in COVID and maybe some of the lessons that we learned from COVID are. Applied in this situation, even though this is not a COVID situation. Uh some of what we're talking about sounds similar. Um so I just hope that we uh keep that in mind uh cuz I think self regulation with the kids. Um with a teacher in front of a screen is gonna be, is gonna be an issue. It's gonna be something to watch. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, do you have any comments?
Um yeah, I just wanna tag in a little bit on the online piece. We are in such unprecedented. Then at times right now with what we're having to deal with. Um there's just aren't candidates out there. And I understand the concerns that it is close to school, but it sounds to me like there's been some really good thought. And as Sean said, thinking outside of the box to try to remedy this. Um having taught during remote times under not great circumstances, and I was one of the ones that was teaching in two classrooms at the same time with kids in remote. Sean is absolutely right. It is hard to keep them motivated. However, I do think a situation um like what John has been talking about. With this this program will lend itself a little bit better because it is. A more organized and they've been doing it a while. Um not to say we weren't organized, but let's face it, we kind of went into it. Feet first and had to learn as we were going. Um so I personally. Am trying to stay positive that it will be a good thing and that it is a solution. And then, and I know the math teachers we have in that building over there. Will support the students as best they can, even if they're not in their physical classes as well. Um so it's been some good conversations tonight, and I just wanna thank the board and everybody for all the hard work that's going into this. And looking forward to a good school year. That's it.
Thank you. That everybody thinks so much. Alright. Do we have anything for non-public?
I have a question about that, though. Usually in, I mean, it hasn't, it hasn't, but usually in August, we get. The nomination forms and information on all the people who superintendent it's hired over the summer. It's fine if you bring it in September.
It will have to be September.
Alright, so then I just needed a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, yeah. It was seven forty, that's good.